Albany.
Bill here.
Harney. Here.
Here.
Brighton.
Here.
Brownington. Brunswick.
Here.
Cabot. Charleston. Concord. Corrin.
Here.
Anvil.
Here.
Derby.
Here.
East Haven.
Here.
Blubber. Granby. Greensboro. Brock.
Here.
Eld Hall. Holland.
Frozen.
Irisburg.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kirby. Lunenburg. Linden.
Yeah.
Maidstone.
Here.
Marshfield.
Here.
Morgan. Newark.
Here.
Newberry.
Here.
Newport Town.
Here.
Norton.
Here.
Peachum. Rye Gate.
Yeah.
Sheffield.
Yeah.
Standard. Sutton. Topsom. Troy. UTG. Victory. Waterford.
Here.
Westfield.
Here.
Westmore.
Here.
Wheelock.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, who is eight two two five two zero five?
Gina.
Okay, thank you Gina. I think there's one other phone number. Four two six three seven five seven.
Cabot Betty.
We thank you Betty.
You have all we need Paul?
Oh yeah, funny.
Perfect.
Shannon, do you have twenty six now?
Just give me a second to count again.
Sure.
Somehow I have twenty seven. But. Yeah.
That's alright, we got enough either way.
No, we need twenty three.
Well, we'll call the Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five, uh, Northeast Kingdom Waste Management Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. We'll jump in for Article One, or, uh, yeah, Article Two, is there any updates to the agenda?
Nick, I have a couple.
Go ahead Steve.
The surplus. Say that, say that again.
The surplus.
Oh. Think we should deal with that, we're quartering away through the year. Um, and property maintenance.
Property maintenance? Uh, and do we want to just, we can put them under other business Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the minutes for the February eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting.
I make a motion to approve them.
Thank you Jake.
Second.
Thank you John. Any discussion? Errors, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes for the February eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, thank you. Good Article Four, which is the, uh, election of officers for the annual meeting.
And before we move on Nick, I just want to make sure that everybody can hear everybody. Um, cause we're using some new, uh, technology here, um. I think everybody here can see the folks who have joined us via Zoom on the television screen. I'm not sure if the people on Zoom though can see everybody who's here.
Might be missing a few on the camera, but I mean, I heard Steve clear his day back there too, so.
Okay, as long as everybody can hear everyone, I think we're, uh, we're good to go, everybody back there can, okay, okay.
So we're getting the election of officers?
Um, so. Before the meeting started, there was an executive committee meeting and, uh, six of the seven committee members were here. Expressed the willingness to continue to serve. Um, Gene, you're the seventh. Still interested in?
Yeah.
Okay, um. But. Several of the executive committee members said that if, um, other people were interested in serving, that they would gladly step aside. So, any? Folks interested in? Taking the reins on the executive committee, uh, the executive committee hasn't been super active, uh, in the last couple of years, but. I would anticipate, you know, that they would still meet occasionally. For certain things. Like, uh, today they met to. Go over the administrative rules. Uh, which we'll discuss a little bit later. Um, for those who don't know, I think it was in the notes who the current executive committee members are. I guess I would first ask if there are other board members interested. Speak now or. Or not.
Don't all jump at once.
Well, then I guess, um, oh, we typically move the slate forward. In one.
Yes.
One motion.
Yep, unless, unless there's anybody that, uh, really, really wants to be on there, just, you know, just in case.
I'm not seeing anybody, uh, here in person, uh, Nick, so. Um, and I don't see any faces on the Zoom call either that would indicate. So I guess I would take a motion to move the current slate of the executive committee members. And, and to reelect them. Uh, in their current roles. So. I'll, I'll make that motion.
I heard all that, it's been made in second, is there any discussion? On the panel, does everybody know who it is that they read their notes? Perfect. Alright, hearing no discussion, uh, all those in favor by approving the election of officers, uh, as written. Uh, signify by saying aye? Aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, well, thank you all again. Uh, Article Five would be the, uh, Executive Director search.
Uh, we have something, so we have some other things.
And Walter, do you want to, uh?
Well, before that.
Chairs that, so.
Well, uh, before that, we typically, um, identify our newspaper record and reestablish our monthly meeting schedule. So our current newspaper of record is the Caledonian Record. And our current meeting schedule is the second Tuesday of every month.
At six thirty.
Correct.
I make a motion that we, uh, continue the same as we have.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Shannon, do you need any specific language there?
Yeah, what was that? It was two thing, the newspaper and the current meeting schedule, so.
Yeah, to, to remain the same, the Cal Rec and the second Tuesday of every month at six thirty.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of having the Cal Rec and keeping the second Tuesday at six thirty, uh, the meeting day, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Thank you, eyes have it.
Nick, I had a question.
Yes sir.
Um, s- so, uh, posting the warnings, um, I've been posting one up here in Island Pond, I think was the, I've been doing that. And, um, it's kind of difficult because I don't have a real good printer anymore. And, uh, I was wondering, is there someone that would also like to post the, the warnings for the meetings?
Uh, Paul, do you have a, do you have something for Bruce or?
Um, Bruce, do you think we could just send it to the town clerk?
Um, and then i- if, if they printed it out, I'm just curious, i- it's just up here because, uh, it, it was held over from when Joel was the?
No, no, it was just, um, uh, it needs to be posted in three places, so, um. I'm trying to think, we posted here, the district office, Island Pond. Um. We posted. Over in the Linden Town Office too, don't we Steve?
You want to write that off, it's the order.
Oh, okay, you were. Um.
Well, if, um, if they could send it to the town clerk, then, then she could print it off, because what I have to do is I have to. Send it to her, uh, I have to send it to them, uh, at the town clerk's office, and then they have to, uh, print it out. Um, maybe it would cut, cut down one step there, but that, yeah, that, that would be okay, I guess.
Okay. I'm making note of that. Um. And I think. For the sake of spreading it out, cause Brighton's in Essex County, um. Maybe, uh, we could send it to Derby, being our second largest town and being in Orleans County, that would make sense.
Wanted each one, yeah? Does Fran or I, I mean, you just want to send it to the town clerk or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Irene kind of nodded in approval that that seemed okay, so, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'll still, uh, so, so if it's sent to the town clerk, I'll have her print it for me, and then I can just tack it up where I normally do.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, perfect, alright, thank you.
And, and if there are any other towns that would like us to send them the warning, we can certainly do that. Uh, it's just, you know, we're required to do it in three places, so. We want to make sure we have three covered, but. Um. You know, we, we can send it to any of the member towns who would like to post it.
I'm happy to post it in Marshfield if you want one on the other end of the district.
Yeah, why don't we do that too then?
Yeah, it'd be good, think about it.
Okay.
Get it out far wide, alright.
I'll make sure Michelle gets that.
Do you have, do we get anything else, or should we move to the Executive Director search?
I think we can move on.
Perfect.
Um, so, um, the committee. To, um. Hire the new executive director has met three times. Uh, March sixth, March seventeenth, and March thirty first. Um, they're scheduled to. Meet again next Monday, the, the meeting schedule is every other Monday at three o'clock. Um. Let's see, what have we done, um? We have approved an ad which, um, went out today. Um, our consulting firm has, um, distributed the ad. In a number of, um. Places, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, uh. Obviously their website and a couple of other websites, um. That they tap into. Um. Ken, I'm gonna mark you down as present, sorry, everyone. Um. It's been forwarded to the Cal Rec. We're gonna run it, the Barton Chronicle. And, um. The North Star. Um. Those will be the local. Uh, sources for the ad, uh, VLCT, we'll put it on their website, NARA, we'll include it in their newsletter. Um. I think it's being distributed in Rhode Island, Connecticut, New Hampshire, in various municipal. Um, websites, uh, Shannon, I reached out, or I. Sent it to the listserv. And the moderator said that it needed to be reviewed first before it could be released, so I don't know if you saw it. Cause I'm assuming you're on that list. Um. But I don't think I received anything.
Yeah, you sent it to the wrong one, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, it was the Hazwellies Network and the, cause the swimming one is like internal. Like DEC, the swimming communication only, I'm not sure anyone's ever been that clear. Um, but I. I think I, I think I mentioned the, the listservs in the email I sent you, that, that it'll go without. Having any moderator look at it.
So you didn't receive it?
I did, I did, but yeah, no, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't at my computer today, um, but I see it now, and, um, I, I, yeah, we, we. Don't allow the swimmies to like post to the swimming listserv, that's just DEC communications, um.
Can you just send me the proper?
Yeah, I think I did, in that email I sent you.
Okay, I'll look.
Yeah, but I'll double check.
Cause what I did was I took one of Mia's old messages. And just replied all, and she had two listservs in her. Uh, address, and I just figured that would hit. Folks, but I don't, I don't know who's on those lists, so.
Paul is one of them, the MuniNet?
No.
If you send it to me, I can post it there.
Okay, thank you. And if anybody else has any, I think it's gonna run in seven days. It's gonna run in the Burlington Tree Press. Um. And I think that's it for printed. Outlets, I think, um. The consulting firm is, is relying primarily on, um. Digital media, we put it on Facebook today. So it's, it's gonna be spread out, the closing date is May fifth. Um, I would assume we would just simply extend that if we don't get an, you know. Um, sufficient number of applicants, uh, the committee is currently working on, uh, interview questions. And, uh, we've discussed having an initial round of interviews via, uh, phone. Um, I'm not sure if that'll be strictly phone, or if it'll. It'll, it'll be in this format via Zoom, we haven't really gotten that far, I guess. Um, but I feel like we're on. Uh, we're still on schedule. Uh, for, you know, getting applications. And, uh, being able to interview folks throughout the spring and summer.
Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process.
Yeah, so Walter is the chair of the committee, and he'd like to say a few things.
Yeah, I'd like just to say to everyone on Zoom here too, uh, as Paul said, we met three times. Uh, we chose one out of two firms that applied, uh, for this, it was, I believe, Municipal Resources, Inc. Uh, felt that they could do the best job. Um, they worked with us our first meeting, but, uh, they did, uh, come on board. Uh, via Zoom, our, uh, next meetings, where, uh, they had. Uh, set up, uh, what they wanted to put in an ad, it was, uh, mostly to our satisfaction, we only tweaked it a little bit. Um. It, uh, we're on schedule for how we feel, uh, things will be going. Um. The committee consists of five people. Um, Nick, Barbara, and Steve, and myself. And, uh, we meet. Uh, just like we're meeting today in person and via Zoom. And, uh, I think things are moving forward very well. And, uh, I think we should accomplish, uh, all the goals that we've set in terms of, uh, reviewing. Uh, applications all the way up to hiring. And, uh, as Paul said, uh, you can take a look, uh, in these different publications. Of, uh, what we're, uh, looking for, and, uh, I think the, uh. The ad was very comprehensive. Um, it gave a nice overview of the Northeast Kingdom and why somebody might want to come here. Uh, if they're from, uh, away, or somebody wants to stay here. Um. And, uh, as Paul said, we're gonna meet every other, uh, Monday at three o'clock. Uh, does anybody else on the committee have anything to add?
No, well said, I don't know if anybody, does anybody have anything questions?
I have one question, I, I'm assuming that. You finally nailed down a comprehensive, uh. Review of exactly what it is that Paul does.
Oh yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
And maybe not everything that he does.
No, in fact, I, I asked.
Clean the restroom, drop it.
Well, at, at our last, um, meeting that we had, um, I asked the committee members to come up. With three questions that they'd like to ask. And it could deal with anything. And the response so far, uh. Far exceeds what I had expected in terms of, uh, depth and breadth of the questions, uh, very, very good questions. I do not think you'll be disappointed at all, uh, of how we've approached this. And, uh, hopefully continue, and, uh, you know, we're never gonna be able to replace Paul. But we should be able to find, hopefully, somebody suitable that will grow into the position.
Sharon, it's not, uh, Shannon, it's not too late. Don't you want to come back to Vermont?
Oh, well, I absolutely am trying to come back to Vermont, but. Oh gosh.
I mean, I know you already read it, I mean, I know you can see everything, I mean, a lot to offer.
Read it, cause I wasn't at my computer today, and now I'm cur- curious too, um.
I think you should. I mean, I'm not gonna throw anything out there, but I mean, you might be a shoe in.
I don't know if I could be an employer, like a real boss. You know? I don't know, that's the only thing I could, yeah.
Now you hear it, Steve, I see you had your end up.
Well, I just want to say Shannon, that Paul highly recommended you, so.
Oh, well, I appreciate that Paul, I really do, and obviously it was something that I was heavily considering, um. You know, before leaving the area, and I, and I, and I do wish I could move back in, it's, it's just. The Northeast Kingdom is, is difficult. But. You know, and I didn't feel that way when I was there, it's only since I left that I feel that way, you know, and so I just should have never left, I know, um. But who knows, maybe after reading that position description, I will really consider it more, we will see.
Well, I hope you do. Um, but does anybody, um, have any other questions regarding the Executive Director search?
There still is.
It is.
Walter, is there anybody there?
There is, sir.
Uh, I'm sorry Nick, there's some talking going on here, what'd you say?
I was just wondering if anybody there, I thought Jack, I didn't know if Jack had something going on, uh, say about it or not, I couldn't hear quite, quite good enough.
No, I did, I was just making the statement that definitely. The Northeast Kingdom, but our district as a whole. Is a tremendous difference from one end of it to the other. And whoever takes Paul's place is gonna have to be a people person, undoubtedly. Because Paul has changed drastically. Since he came on board. Twenty-five years ago.
I have a lot more gray hair.
Well, I think I've been on since two thousand and ten, and I think it's drastically changed since then, so. But, and I'm sure for, you know, for a lot of the folks that have been, been on the board for, you know, twenty-five, thirty years or more, um, you know. We're gonna do the best we can, we got the largest, uh. Largest per ca- you know, per, not per capita, but per town, we have the largest district, so hopefully we can. Find somebody that is suitable, obviously, we're not gonna replace Paul like, like Walter said, and others, but. We're gonna do our damn best to try to find somebody that's suitable for the job.
Yeah, the, uh, the consultant actually had some encouraging comments about, um, other similar, um, searches that they've conducted recently, so. Um. You know, it's kind of hard to sit here and think, geez, I wonder who, who's gonna apply, um, but. You know, based on their experience, they seem to think that we, we should, you know, expect to get, uh, eight or ten. Um, suitable candidates, you know, th- there will be more. Who, uh, throw their hat in the ring, but, you know, they, they figured we should be able to get. You know, some pretty reasonably qualified individuals, uh, and, you know, we shouldn't have to like settle for. The two, the only two that, that apply, so I, I was encouraged to hear that.
I'm being optimistic, I think we're gonna have around five or six, I think, but. Anyway. Whatever we get's gonna be something, so. But did anybody else, uh, have anything, Walter, did you have anything to add?
Oh, thank you.
Yep, uh, Westmore has a question, please.
Go ahead Marion.
That is, yeah, that is, uh. Paul, can you once again state the last date that you will be in this position, and at that point, of course, we. As previously discussed, we will hope to fill that position, the date.
Yeah, so my, my target date is, um, September twenty-sixth. Um. And as, uh, I think it was Steve Gray who pointed out, uh, a couple of months ago, we may want to have. I, originally, you know, the timing was to have someone start October first, but. Um, I think it makes sense, if we can, to try and get someone on board September first, so that there's an overlap period. Um, I'm not gonna disappear on the twenty-sixth. But I would like to stop coming in on a regular basis, but I would be available.
Yeah.
You know, to answer questions and things like that, I'm still working on a. On a binder that I can hand, uh, to the next person, that kind of goes over, um. You know, what, what's expected of them on a month-to-month basis.
Well, you got time anyway, Paul, it's twenty, it's September twenty-twenty-sixth, right?
No.
Hey, come on.
And the reason I know this is because I have an app on my phone that tracks the exact. Uh, number of days, hours, or seconds until that time.
Well, believe me, I, I, you can't, you can't fault me for trying, I'm just saying.
Right. But, yeah, I mean, and.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wipe my computer clean and, you know, walk out the door, um, so. Yeah, that's, that's the timing, and hopefully, you know, if, if someone's willing to come on even a little sooner than that. Um, we might be able to. You know, transition over, uh, a little sooner than that, but I, I feel like our timeframe right now. Is to, um. You know, get some folks in for a first round of interviews, kind of digest. That process, and then will it down to have a, a couple of strong candidates come back in for in-person. Uh, interviews and, and see. Um, also. You know, what their willingness is to, uh, to start by September first, you know, they may want to ask. They can start sooner or, or later, and I think, um, the sooner we. Proceed down this path, the more flexibility we'll have in that regard.
Yep. Okay, thank you Paul, from Westmore, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have, uh, anything? Alright, well, we'll move on from the Executive Director search, and we'll go to the administration room. All right, we'll, we'll move on from the executive director search and we'll go to the administration rules or administrative rules, I should say.
So the executive committee met just prior to this meeting. They had already undertaken a review of the administrative rules. Or I should say a partial review. The first thirteen pages. Back in September of twenty-twenty-three, so that gives you an idea of how long ago. We started this process. So it went pretty quickly because the tail end of the document. Is a lot of boilerplate language on things like harassment in the workplace, tobacco policy. A few, few other things. So the executive committee, I guess, feels like now it makes sense to. To. Turn this over to legal counsel for their review and then. Bring it before the full board for approval. I don't know if anybody on the executive committee has any. Anything to add to that?
No.
I, I would say that. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns did provide us with a pretty detailed review. But between September of twenty-twenty-three and recently. They've decided to get out of the business of making recommendations on these rules and highly suggest that. We get our legal counsel involved in the process. I think. Because the league wasn't really in a position to provide strong legal opinions about some of these things. And they felt like some of the law firms would be able to give us, you know, a, a more of a ironclad. Defensible. Review of our administrative policies. So that's where we're at. I'll start pursuing that and hopefully. That won't take too long. And. You know, once that's completed, I'll bring it to the full board for their final approval.
Does anybody have any, any questions?
Like a, a comment.
Go ahead, Steve.
I don't know how others feel, but. I think that we took over the recommendations that the executive committee made. And I don't think anyone else submitted a recommendation, but I gave Paul some comments back in twenty-three, too. And then, then sent it to legal counsel. Otherwise, we're just going to get it, they'll, uh, press it to prove that, or.
A question I, the problem I have that, that Steve is that the executive board is tasked with doing this job. And it should be, the whole board should. Either accept or deny what the executive board. Has put together, and of course, it's going to a legal council. Otherwise, what uses it of the executive board? To do all this work if. It has to have now all the input from everybody once it's done. And that just creates more chaos in time if. If you have. Things that you'd like to bring up, I think it should be brought up beforehand. And that way. Well, I, I haven't seen what was submitted.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, Steve. If you submitted it in twenty-twenty-three, I, I don't know if those changes were incorporated.
Well, pretty much it is a couple of things.
I mean, I can give you what. What the executive committee reviewed, and then you can check and see if those things are in there. That might be the easiest way to do it. Yeah, I mean, if you want to mention them right now, we can do that.
Well, it's pretty much safety. I feel that our employees should wear orange or yellow. While they're working. For own safety. So it'll be visible. And the other thing was. That there should be no smoking. On this fault, on the own property. Or the trucks or on the equipment.
Yeah, and I will tell you that the. The smoking. That is part of our policy right now. But I do know that there are employees that violate that.
But it should be made a consequence.
Yeah, yeah. As far as the. You know, visibility issue goes. We don't necessarily have that written in there, but we could. Could provide employees with. You know, vests or something like that. Because I, I, I agree. I think. First of all, it makes them more visible. And second of all, it indicates the public. That they're employees. And sometimes I think people coming into our facility don't know who is. You know, an employee and who's just another customer, so.
Relative to that.
Yeah.
If you were going to provide. Bright colored outerwear. Would you have graphics on it that identify the individual as.
I, I think something like that makes sense to, you know. We have periodically purchased t-shirts. That say any K W M D. Has the website listed. But I think some sort of high visibility vest. Because any K W M D would, would cover that. And I don't think that would be that costly to do.
And, and at some point, it could save you some serious legal issues.
So do you want to look into that, Paul? I have no, I, I don't even know that we even have to have it in, in. The administrative rules as much as we need it as a.
Yeah, I was just looking over the tobacco policy and. And I mean, it's pretty clear that. Tobacco products and alternative nicotine. Even it mentions e-cigarettes. Is prohibited on district property. When the employees on district property and while employees performing work for the district regardless of the fence location. And then there's. District action upon violation of policy. Just says they may be subject to disciplinary action. Up to and including termination. Says executive director may require an employee to successfully complete. An appropriate drug or alcohol abuse employee assistant rehabilitation program. So it is embarrassing. Just need to do a better job of.
It's, it's, it's actually all in there because it's still covered under the P P E portion on twenty-two point two for the district safety and health policy, so. I think we're good as long as you want to just make sure that we. Can get the high vis stuff for some of the guys.
And Paul?
Yeah.
Jack just showed you under the. Sixteen point one food or uniform allowance. It does mention. Foods and safety uniform for work-related activities.
Sixteen point one?
Yes, so it's already in there.
Wait, this is a hundred dollars.
Yep.
Yep.
So. It's in there.
Yeah, so I think both things are covered, Steve. We need to do a better job of. Seeing that those things are.
Those are good things to follow through on.
Go ahead, Steve.
The full board did authorize the executive committee to go over this document, and that's what we have done.
And like I said, we are going to send it to legal. They're going to look over it before obviously anything happens and then we can. You know, bring it to the full board after that comes back. Part of the thing that they look at, too, is if there's any changes. In state legis-, you know, so if, if something changes, they'll go through and change accordingly. So if there's something in there that shouldn't be in there or something that needs to be. Updated to different verbiage. You know, they'll let us know all that, too, so. Did anybody else have any questions on the administrative rules?
Who, who is our attorney now?
It's still. I don't know if they go by the same name, but it was McKee. Giuliani and Cleveland. I don't know that any of them, those particular individuals are still practicing, but I know others. Trying to think of who. I can see his face. But it's been a while since we used them, but that would be the firm that I would. Stick with because they're familiar with us. And they're out of, uh, affiliate.
Anybody else have anything? All right. Hearing none, we can, we'll move to updates, financial and programs.
Yeah, so. You know, I mentioned in the notes where we were financially. This might be a good time to talk about. With surplus. And I.
Yeah, you can under financial, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think. I've addressed that in previous notes that. You know, we ended the year with a surplus, but we had bills to pay at the beginning of the year. That ate that up and literally ate all of it up. You know, we're, we're in the hole now. For the tune of. I think it's seventy-four thousand dollars.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. So. I mean, I can go back and look and see what we ended the year with, but I, I do recall. Detailing some of those bills that were. Received. In twenty-twenty-five for expenses incurred in twenty-twenty-four. And that, that shows on paper that we had a surplus. And we may still have a small one. But we. Let, let's just say we have five thousand dollars.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, it, we, we physically don't have that money right now. Because we are in.
But that's what we're going to have on paper.
Yeah, we did have. We were notified today that we will be receiving a check for seventy-four thousand. For a project that was recently undertaken in Newport Town. Demolition, so that'll. I, I, I guess what I'm saying is it might be better to re, to look at this situation again. Next month to see where we're at, because I think that'll pull us. Back to even, and then I can go back and look and see what those bills were and, and see if we actually do have. A surplus. Were there, did you have other questions about the budget?
Oh, when I talked to you earlier about number fourteen, the. The, yes, that was on last month. But we didn't have a meeting.
Yeah, I'll have to circle that now.
And then I caught you about number forty-five.
Oh, right, public officials, yeah.
What was that one, Paul? I didn't see that one.
It's a line item forty-five under public officials insurance. There's a charge for seventy-one dollars. It's not a, obviously a big. Line item, but it's just an odd number, and I'm just wondering. Maybe something up posted in the wrong. To the wrong line item. Or if it was some sort of. Charge for something, you know, I, I. I don't know. So I'll, I'll follow up on this for the next meeting.
Paul question.
Yes.
And I'm sure it's in the budget, I didn't vote, but it just looks like the insurance public official. Twenty-one thousand dollars seems like a lot of money, and I'm just wondering.
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you. I just know protect us from. Fetal action if someone decided to sue us. I think there's a little more to it than that, and I was telling Steve about this earlier today. We get billed quarterly by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns for seventeen thousand dollars. That covers the public officials insurance, that covers workers comp, and it covers property and casualty. So. Shell then distributes those to various line items in the budget breakdown. But if you do the math, seventeen thousand times four. Is sixty-eight thousand dollars. So that's what we're paying total for those insurances. And then we try and break that down. As best we can. And so that's where the twenty-one thousand comes from. If you look at the workers' comp line item, there's, you know, a pretty large number there as well. And I think. Most of that is driven by increases in workers' comp. And also in property claims.
That come under public officials?
No, that part. But that's, I don't think that's the. Line item that's driving, you know, increasing the cost. We used to pay about twelve or thirteen thousand. For those three insurances. And so that's gone up considerably in the last few years. But the drivers are workers' comp and. Property. Not necessarily just buildings, but also auto.
Paul, did anybody's? I know you had mentioned in the notes here that we haven't seen anything or, or heard anything yet about anything affecting us tariff-wise or for bringing up metal and recycling.
Yeah. Our broker said that we're going to continue to get a hundred dollars a ton for mixed paper in April. So that's good news, although our, our mixed paper. Does say domestically. Cardboard goes to Canada, but we haven't seen any change in pricing there. Our metals go to Canada, tin, well. It's not true. Our metals go to Albany. I think eventually they make their way. Into Canada.
Well, they go, they go both. All metals brings them to both.
Well, all metals doesn't broker our metal or I, I should. Scrap metal, yes, but not tin and aluminum.
No, yeah, got you.
Yeah, go through a different source. Plastic stays domestic. And plastic, we, we've seen a little increase. We have a load that we're ready to ship right now. And we were told that that was going to go up a couple cents a pound. I'm not exactly sure where that puts us, but I think around sixty or eighty. Which is pretty good for mixed plastic. But no, I haven't heard anything from our broker about any kind of.
Good.
On tariffs or due, due to tariffs. Any other financial?
Yes, I have one.
Questions, Shannon?
It, it says in the updates in the notes. The S W I P grant reimbursement. Will yield thirty-seven thousand dollars. With the current situation with monies from the federal government and stuff like that, is, is that a reasonable request that we would?
Yeah, the, the SWIP grant is not affiliated with the federal government at all. That's. State of Vermont grant that is based on revenues received for. For trash. So the six-dollar a ton tax at the landfill. Uh, funds. That pot of money. And, um, that's been pretty stable. Over the last several years and, uh, with. Uh, the grant amount for that, the awards have already been issued for twenty twenty-five, so. Uh, it won't change this year, and I really, you know, unless there's a dramatic drop in the amount of tonnage going to. Uh, being taxed, because it's not just the Coventry landfill, it's, uh. Any ton of trash generated in the state of Vermont is subject to that tax, so it doesn't matter if it's disposed of in-state or out-of-state. We would have to see, uh, a reduction. In the amount of tonnage to see that number go down. And, and who knows, maybe we will, but. That trend. Uh, doesn't go down very often.
Good, thank you.
Any other financial questions, comments? Uh, just wanna mention a little bit about programs. Our hazardous waste. Season will be starting up in May. We'll start taking appointments, I believe, the week of April. Let's say twenty-second. And then the first Tuesday in May. Uh, will be our first appointment day. And then we, if you look on our website, we have a host of, uh. Hazardous waste events, I think eight scattered throughout the district. So, you know, we do have the remote collection events. And also for folks, they have the ability to bring materials here. We do have an open date. Where no appointment is required here in Lindenville at the end of September, and that's annually, so if people can't make it. Because our appointments are scheduled for Tuesdays and Thursdays during the week. And not everybody can get here then. So they can attend any of the remote events. Uh, on the weekends. Uh, you don't have to live. In the town where the hazardous waste event is scheduled. We are seeing more and more people travel across town lines to participate in these events, which is great. Because we try and schedule them regionally so that people don't have to travel very far. If you live in a town right next to Lindenville, you probably wonder why you never have a hazardous waste event. That's because you live in a town close to Lindenville and you. You know, bring your material here. Um, but you can always attend. One of the remote events. Uh, on a Saturday. In a, in another district town. That's not to say that you can participate, like, for instance, Guildhall is having a hazardous waste event this year. In combination with a bulky event. The bulky event is only for Guildhall residents. But the hazardous waste event is for any district event. And that holds true for any hazardous waste event, any district town. Uh, resident can participate. But the bulky events are town-specific. Uh, anybody have any questions on that?
I got a question. Um, Ron, where I get used to have. One, but I noticed there's none on the schedule this year.
They, so, um, what we've done is we've developed kind of a perpetual hazardous waste. Calendar. And we've clustered towns into groups of four. So every four years. You would have one in Rye Gate. I don't think we hold one in Groton anymore, just because there's one in Rye Gate. Rye Gate will, uh. Topsom and Newberry are that cluster, so if you're not in Rye Gate, we're in one of those other towns. You might say, oh, it's not necessarily easy to get to Topsom from Rye Gate, but.
It'd be easier to get there than the transfer station.
Yeah.
Uh, and I saw Markfield on there, which is, which is good too, but I just was curious, I didn't know about the rotation.
Yeah, and that's, that's how it works. We tried to cluster the towns into groups. To rotate through and then. Uh, I don't know that. Many people would recognize that. You know, oh, we had one three years ago, we're due. But if anyone asks, that's, that's how it works. The only exception to that. Well, there are two exceptions. We have the open day here in Lindenville at the end of every season. The first Saturday in June. Is, uh, an event in Derby. And Derby's the second largest town in the district. It's up there, up north, so we, we always. You know, try and stick to that schedule so that people do get used to that, the first Saturday in June.
For next, for next month, Paul, is there a way that you could have a, if anybody wanted to know of the locations for this year?
Well, they're available on our website.
Okay.
And I think. All of the transfer stations. Should have received the calendar. In a printed form. If you. Don't know that to be the case. Let us know and we'll get flyers sent out to you, especially if you're hosting an event. But it is kind of important that if you're not hosting an event, that you can notify your residents. Where the closest one is and what date for that is.
Uh, Paul Ken here, could you, uh, give us that list of the groups of four, make, next time around, so we can see those clusters?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I, I have a question. You mentioned something about bulky events. Tell me a little bit about that.
Sure. Um, let me just make that note first.
Good question.
So, um. Some towns at their, uh, facilities collect. Bulky, uh, materials year-round. Um, couches, furniture. Um, things that just don't fit in bags. Trying to think of what some of the other common items. Uh, fiberglass shower stalls come to mind. But basically things that, that don't fit in a bag.
Toilet.
Nick, did you wanna?
Oh, I just said like a toilet, like anything bulky.
Yeah, yeah, chairs, couches, rugs. Um, sheet rock, stuff like that.
Um, so, so then where is it disposed?
The landfill.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't get. Separated and then recycled somehow, it's just. It gives towns the ability to keep things from essentially being thrown along the roads. Um, and those are the items that tend to be. Discarded because people don't want to pay to get rid of them, or they just simply don't know where to take them. So, um, many towns have permanent facilities for that. Um, but other towns do it. Um, with special events. Some do it once a year, some do it twice a year, and it usually depends on the size of the town. Albany and Irisburg do it. Spring and summer. Um, and they share the event that's held in Albany. Trying to think, you know, a town like Peacham, they have a container for it. Rye Gate has a container for it that they collect it year-round. Most of the towns that provide that service, uh, have fees. For the various pieces of furniture. Uh, Westmore has a scale where they can weigh the materials that comes in and charge for it that way. So it's, it's handled differently in different towns. Um, and we try and encourage towns that don't collect those items. To have an event at least annually. Um, and for most of the towns in our region. Once a year is sufficient. Um, I know the town of Danville recently added. Bulky collection to their facility, so they used to do it once in the spring and once in the summer. Now they're doing it year-round. And I think a number of towns have done that over, over the years. Because some people just don't like to wait. But. Yeah, so that, I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question for you, follow-up on that, uh. Groton, we were kind of talking about maybe like a junk ordinance a few years ago, something like that. We're, one of our thoughts was. If, to see if we can contract or somehow get you to come out to Groton. Or like soon after, like, here's the news, folks, you gotta clean up your yards. But we also have. You know, uh, folks right in town. Not in Rye Gate, um, we're wondering if we could post something like that.
Well, and, um, yeah, that's a good point. Because like, um, some of the smaller towns like Bloomfield. They'll do a bulky event and scrap metal at the same time. Because most people don't. You know, they think, uh, a washing machine is a bulky item. It's certainly bulky, but it's scrap metal, so, um. We'll set up, uh, an arrangement with a, a hauler. And, uh, they'll put containers. Basically anywhere you want them. And then we'll send somebody down there to kind of oversee. What goes in this dumpster, what goes in that dumpster, what can't be put in a dumpster. Things like tires, um, batteries, fluorescent light bulbs. Uh, propane tanks, you know, because people don't know what to do with those things either. And so, uh, we would collect those in a truck. Um, and then help the town. Direct, you know, this goes in that container, this goes in the other. Uh, but it's not something that we would do alone. So the town would have to commit some sort of resources. Uh, whether it be a bucket loader to help fill the containers. Or manpower to throw stuff in. In the containers, but we would provide a truck and a person to. Kind of give you the guidance that you might need for an event like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about programs at all?
Just, just a quick one. When you say there's different towns surrounding towns, if they don't, if they are provided by districts. Are they allowed to?
Oh, no, no, only district members, so, and that's a good question from Derby, because Newport City is not allowed. To participate in our hazardous waste collections.
Who isn't?
Newport City.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I.
Same with Coventry.
I have a lot of friends, yeah. In, in Coventry and in Newport, yeah, I wanted to know, if I can. Say something, no, I won't say. Unless they ask it.
Right, if you're gonna say something, say no, you've got to use the, the one at the landfill. Because they do have opportunities to get rid of it. It's just once in the spring and once in the fall.
And they're both close to each other. Newport City's is on the way to the landfill, so.
Do they hold the event at the facility?
I think they do hold one there, and, uh, I don't know if they do anymore, if they just go to the one at the landfill, but Newport City is right there. Well, like I said, less than a mile, probably a mile or so away from the landfill. Any, anything else on, on updates, or?
No, um, the only other issue then is the one that Steve brought up at the beginning with, uh.
Property maintenance, yeah, we can do that in other business, so. Steve, did you, uh, you had something you wanted to say about the property maintenance?
Uh, yeah, before, but before I get to that, um. I just wanted to let everyone know that Diana Simpson called me today. And she resigned from the board. It was too busy with her. Her work job and bust on the farm. Oh, okay. Um, I did give her a name. Could talk to someone and something that might be interested, she's down here all the time at recycling. Okay, um. I was just wondering. If we're ever gonna get to fixing up the scrap metal yard.
Uh, well, I, yeah, it's in rough shape. The, uh, fence really took it hard this year. I'd like to repair the fence. We do have some stay mat. That we've been filling in holes with. Beyond that, I'm not sure what else we can do, really. I've always been torn between. What I, what I ideally like to do is have someone come in. Break out like a twenty-by-twenty section of concrete. Pour concrete back in there. And see how that holds up and maybe. Repeat that. I've had folks say, oh, you should just pave it. I don't think asphalt is gonna hold up in there. With the way the equipment, especially the skid steer, you get on hot asphalt with that, it's gonna tear it right up.
And I, I trust the ground underneath it. There's a lot of soft spots back there where they filled stuff in too, isn't there?
Well. The actual footing with, or footprint of where the building was is pretty solid. Uh, there are some holes, and when it rains, the water just goes away. I don't know how or where it goes exactly, but there are some holes under there that. The water just disappears sometimes, um, but it is in rough shape. And I don't know, like financially right now. I, I don't think, I, I think we could repair the fence. But I don't know how much money it would take to. You know, redo the surface out there.
How about taking off the railroad tracks?
I, I don't even know what that would cost, because those are. You know, in there. But, but they do present problems for us.
Always, we're always worried about.
Yeah.
A tire going to the scrap.
Oh, well. Um, it's, it gets worse for us, because i- if you're in the skid steer and you hit one of those rails. It stops the machine dead and you go forward, and you're lucky you have that bar in front of you, because. Sometimes it'll rattle your teeth if you're not careful. Um, I'd love to get the rails pulled out of there. There's probably some money in it. But I, I just don't know. What piece of machinery would, would do that? You know, do you have to jackhammer the entire length of that and pull it out? You know, I don't know.
Are they cemented in?
Yeah. Al- although I'll tell you that in some places, especially right in the scrap metal area where the container is. A lot of that, um, concrete has been. You know, scraped aside, so. Some of those rails, I don't know how long they are, where they're connected, but. Some of them may come out pretty easily. But what happened was, once the railroad left. Whoever took over those buildings just poured concrete over the whole thing. Uh, because the rails weren't.
Yeah.
You know, they were in the way.
They, uh, I don't know whether, how big a hole that you would have to have. In order to dig in underneath them and roll them up. Pop them out that way, it'd be about the only way. Either that or put a vibrator on them and shake the holy hell out of them. So that it would break all the concrete back down too, like an oversized jackhammer.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Are there any grants or anything?
Now, years ago, we got a transportation grant because they were transportation, or they, yeah, were transportation buildings. I'm not sure we could still pull that off, especially for a space where the building doesn't actually exist any. You know, the building we occupy. That's the one we got grant money for from the, uh. Uh, Intermodal Surface Transportation Enhancement Act of whenever that was. But because there's no building next to us anymore, I don't know that we could get grant money for a site that was previously. A transportation building. Because I thought it was a stretch. Then, to get transportation money to fix up a building that wasn't being used for transportation at that time. I think it would be more of a stretch. To try and get money for a building that doesn't exist any. You know, I ha- I had someone say I should talk to, when Joe Bennie was still in the, uh, legislature. Talk to him about getting money. Uh, to fix that. You know, and it, I, I, there's just no pot of money. Out there, you know, maybe some USDA money. Um, I just don't know how. That whole system is being affected by things currently, but. That, that would probably be the one area to look in. Uh, because we are still in the re- reap zone. To see if we can get money to do that. The problem is, I don't know what to pursue. And it's gonna cost money to find that out. We, we need some sort of engineering firm to come in and say, oh. You wanna get the rails out, here's what you're gonna have to do. You wanna reestablish the surface. You're not going to put a roof over it. Here's what you're going to need to put down if you're driving these types of vehicles on there. And, you know, I really don't know where to turn to to get that information. We have recently, we cleaned up the refrigerator area. We're taking those again. And we take mattresses, put them in the bucket of the skid steer and use those as like a mop. And to help get the nails and the screws and the broken glass and whatever else is out there cleaned up. We also have a magnet that fits on our forklift that we can travel slowly over that surface to try and remove nails and screws that way as well. So, you know, the area itself is rough. But, you know, I feel like we try and keep it clean with those other methods so that people can drive back there. And not only other people, but, you know, our trucks are constantly in and out of that yard. And in the 26 years I've been here, I don't know that we've had any issues with tires. You know, picking up a nail or a screw. Of course, our tires are a little thicker than most. And I don't know, you know, once in a while, someone will complain and say they thought they got a nail from our scrap metal yard. You know, who knows if it came from there or somewhere else. It's hard to say, but I wouldn't doubt because people, you know, when the containers are picked up, stuff runs out the back. When people drop stuff off, they don't always put it in the right area. People fill things like washers and dryers full of nails and screws. And then when we pick them up, they end up on the ground. So it does get messed up, but we have taken steps to try and minimize any damage to vehicles.
Nice.
We have anything else on to the property maintenance? Are we?
But also I haven't checked it out, but I understand that one of the back walls could use some attention.
Yeah, there are some bricks. We had some work done. It's been a while. But we could use some interior brickwork. When the building was built, it wasn't obviously built to be impacted. So the bricks on the inside of the building are soft. And it doesn't take much, whether it's the corner of a pallet or even cardboard. And in our cardboard area, pushing the cardboard pile up with the skid steer tends to loosen the mortar in between bricks. We did have a lot of that repaired and that's holding up well. By our back door, though, we go in at an angle and turn and I think we're just catching the wall with pallets. And over time, you know, a decent sized hole has developed there. We haven't gone through the building. But, you know, we try and make the drivers aware of that so that they don't continue to knock bricks out. But that will need some attention. I would say within the next year or so anyway. And, you know, when I got here, I was given a list of priorities and there were top priorities and then other things. And I think, you know, I don't mean to pass the buck, but I would put things like that, repairing the wall, on a list of priorities to be done, you know, sooner rather than later. That is easier, I think, to do than repairing the surface in the yard. Because at least I know I need to call a mason. You know, outside, I'm not sure, you know, where to start with that. So if we need to get a civil engineer involved, I just don't know. And who knows? Maybe that's a question that we ask the incoming person. Hey, we've got these issues. What would you, how would you attack this? That's going to be one of my questions that I put on for the committee.
Steve have anything else or are we good on the property stuff?
Just those two issues.
Thank you, Steve. Any other business? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Nick, are we going to be having any in-service meetings coming up for newer attendance or to that people could attend, like even supervisors to make sure they're up to speed with our latest recommendations and recycling efforts?
Corey Rayner will be venturing out to various facilities for that very purpose once the weather gets a little better. We used to try and do that here in Linenville, but we found that, you know, it's much easier to go to a facility and work with that individual one-on-one under their circumstances. Because not everything we do here in Linenville translates to every facility and it's tough to get people to come to Linenville, especially if they have to travel any length, you know, distance wise. I'm not sure that she'll get to every facility, but I know that she is planning to hit a number of facilities. And I guess if you would like to have her visit your facility, reach out to her directly and put it in a request. Or send me an email and I'll forward it on to her. Because I think that will help her prioritize where to go. Because some places have had the same people for years. And sometimes you can communicate via email or phone call and get them up to speed, you know, pretty quickly. But other people do better if you're on site doing, you know, hands-on work with them, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Any other business?
Hey, Paul. Shannon want to talk about the mattresses?
Oh, yeah. Well, so we started before the meeting to talk briefly about mattresses. And since Shannon is with us, I think it would be great to have her say a few words about what's happening with mattresses. And then I can, you know, say a few things about what we're recommending people do with the mattresses.
Yeah, so I can just share an update that I learned from Trevor Vance with Casella at like a regional meeting that he was presenting on Casella's new mattress recycling program. And so from what he shared with me, and I can't, and, you know, Nick had some insight more so from like the hauler experience of what happens when you're actually drop off a mattress. But from what I understand, they are no longer placing mattresses into the landfill and they are placing them off to the side and shipping them down to Connecticut where they are recycled. So the cost that customers are paying for their mattress disposal is now like that recycling fee. And so that is why mattress disposal, you know, yeah, you've been hearing that it has increased in cost. And that is, and that is true. And that's because they're trying to keep them out of the landfill and ship them, ship them quite far away to conserve that landfill space.
And if I could add to that, when Shannon says that the, you know, the cost has gone up, we're talking $45 to $50 per piece. So a mattress and a box spring could cost $90 to $100 to get rid of. So what we're recommending is that people spend the 20 minutes with a sheet rock knife and a claw hammer to dismantle their mattresses and box springs. You can fit, because I've done it, all the cloth and foam from a mattress in two or three 30 gallon bags. And then the rest is clean wood that could be used for kindling and a metal frame that can be recycled as scrap metal. And it literally takes 20 minutes per unit. I think we even have a video posted on our website of a gentleman who did this in Canada, just to show people how easy it is. When we tell people this, some are like, ah, I can't be bothered with that. And that's fine if you want to pay that cost. But, you know, if you don't, I think this is a very economical way to save quite a lot of money. So, you know, people come to you with mattresses or box springs, I would highly recommend that you tell them about dismantling them because they'll pay a lot less to get rid of them.
And as you drive around the kingdom, you can actually see some in people's burn piles, which, you know, isn't the right way to do things, but I guess, you know, that's how we used to do it. So people still think they can.
So that's, that's all I have.
On that mattress thing, what are you doing with the foam mattresses? A lot are made out of, almost all foam.
Yeah, the foam would have to be bagged up as well, Ken. If you can either rip it up into smaller pieces and stuff it in a bag or roll it up and stuff it in a bag. You know, it depends on the thickness of the foam, but you're right. Some of them are predominantly foam now.
You can cut it up with a big, like a sawzall, and you can cut the foam that way into chunks.
Yeah.
But aren't you just saying, gonna put that into the landfill? Is that what's going on with it?
It is, but what the issue is, is the owners of the landfill get their equipment wound up in the metal frames. And so they spend sometimes hours trying to get those things out untangled. So they don't want to see them anymore. And then I think they tend to rise in a landfill too.
Yeah, so they rise in a landfill and also, you know, Trevor opened my eyes a little bit about the value of airspace in a landfill. And so a mattress weighing only 50 pounds takes up the same amount of space as 1,500 pounds of trash because you cannot compact a landfill. I mean, a mattress, like you can compact typical household waste. And so when you look at the value of trash that could go into that space, and then so in that sense, it makes sense to keep mattresses out of the landfill. And then airspace in a landfill actually appreciates at two times the value of inflation or something like that. And so there's a lot of economic factors into, you know, wanting to conserve space for future material to be put in there because the value of the landfill airspace ever increases.
But if I cut up a foam mattress and they put it into there, isn't there still a problem there?
I mean, certainly it doesn't, yeah, it's not diverting it from the landfill, right? Like, you know, it is, it is a unique thing now that Casella has this opportunity to to pay them to bring the mattress down to Connecticut and recycle it. And so, yeah, I guess it sort of depends on the person's financial. You know, if they find it more financially feasible to dismantle the mattress themselves, it can be disposed in the landfill. They're just trying to keep out as many as they possibly can. And so I do like that, you know, yeah, because mattresses are not banned from landfill disposal. And so it's more Casella saying they don't want them. But if a resident chooses to dismantle it themselves, then yeah, it is. I mean, it will end up in the landfill, but it's sort of like, you know, it's sort of like an economic question at that point.
Well, and to get to the root of Ken's question, removing the mattress pad from the metal frame allows it to be compacted more. So that's why you can still get away with doing that. Yes, you're still throwing the foam in the landfill and the foam isn't quite as compactable as maybe some other items. But because it's off the metal frame, it's more compactable than if it was left on the metal train.
Paul, maybe someday we can get so we can recycle that foam along with all the big plastic bags you could get us to recycle.
It's all recyclable, Ken. It's just a matter of getting it in enough volume and having enough space to store it to ship it to market.
I believe the only small-scale mattress facility in Vermont is Sleepwell in Burlington.
Yeah.
And I think they charge $40 or $45 a unit there as well.
Anything else? Other business? There isn't any. I would take a motion to adjourn. Perfect. Any discussion? There never is. I appreciate everybody. All those in favor of this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Awesome. Appreciate it. Everybody have a great night. Thank you. You too.